And it kind of helps the communication.
So you're basically just changing it from once a year to twice a year?
Right. I think it's, I think excellent, I think we should keep them unless, I mean.
About before each meeting, or before each town meeting.
I just would like to people, you know, people be able to see that we are working together, not just within the individual boards, but all together, you know, trying to make.
As long as it's organized and there's an agenda with criteria.
Mary says she'll be willing to help out.
Because that can get pretty sideways quickly.
I, I, I think that in all the past, it was only one that was kind of a little not so perfect, but I think throughout the past, I, I think the meetings have been really great, positive. And again, you learn things about the boards. I mean, I try to read everybody's minutes and watch a meeting now and then, but you learn a lot of what other boards are doing. Sometimes it's, it's strange how you just don't know. Sometimes they're working on big projects and you're kind of wowed when you find out, so.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what, that's exactly my point.
So I don't know if we have to actually vote on it, but.
So was Bill's thought process maybe a few weeks ahead of annual town meeting and fall town meeting?
I, I think that would be a good timing because then, you know, you might have a good understanding where other boards might be on certain items that are going to be on the town meeting, you know, especially if they're being promoted by that board or if that board's a sponsor, it might give at least a board level discussion of, hey, here's why that, that board is, is asking for, without it being a, you know, on-town-meeting-for discussion.
Can we also invite the school committee? They don't usually come to that, but for a quick update.
Especially not, no.
Well, then, then at that point though, is the, is the senior center large enough? Or do we need the library or?
And do we need a town moderator?
But not everybody, not everybody shows up. Sometimes it's just the director for that board.
Yeah, yeah.
Or two or three members. So, but we'll know in advance because people will.
We can invite everybody, you'll see who's gonna show up, right? And, you know, expect the whole boards to be.
You'll need to know because of quorum, you'll need, they'll need to post, so you'll know exactly how many people.
Are here, yeah. So looking for just the representatives of each board. It doesn't have to be whole entire board. Just so we all know what's going on and what our boards are working on. Especially now with everything that's going on, there's so many different things on the table.
Do you need us to take a vote promotion or are you just gonna act on that?
Um, I'll just act on that, that's fine.
Andrew, the second, the second part of my whole question to you that was, had to do with the master plan for the town. So that's something that you said you would check with Randy in the planning board. I was just surprised that we don't have anything set in place, five, usually the five.
Was there funding last year?
There is, so there was funding appropriated, but so the, the planning board is actually taking it in two chunks, where the first operation that they're doing is the diagnostic of the zoning. And once they complete that, then they'll be moving into the, into the master planning phase.
Yeah. And that's, which board is responsible for that?
Planning board.
Planning board, so economic development doesn't participate in any of this?
Everybody's invited and it's all public. It's completely, it's, um, it's.
But do we have something literally in writing? I mean, would, would that be something that would be put in writing and viable for the people to see? This is a five-year projection and stuff.
Absolutely. There, there's, there's a master plan out there now.
Do you have a copy of the, of the old master plan?
Mm-mm.
The planning board has, I don't know if, if, if there's any in the selectmen's, but I'm sure that. Mr. Smith, can we have a copy of the master plan? I'll reach, I'll ask Randy. I think he probably.
I'll ask Randy, but to answer the question that we were going to do the zoning diagnostic, hopefully present it to the town without the changes in the zoning bylaws and such at town meeting. So then we'll have a new game plan to act on the master plan and review and update the.
The existing one, yeah.
And to your point, then people will come together and.
Right.
And have their say and, and we'll, we'll move forward with a new.
And that's ultimately my, that's what I was looking for, yeah, for everybody to come together.
It's super fun, it's super fun because people, very creative people will come into the room and they'll all have ideas of what they want the future Charlton to look like.
I'm.
It's, um, it's very, it's really, it's, I could say for all the years.
We all know, right, what, how they see the town and.
As long as there are trade or jobs for Patsy.
Yeah, I said that, there needed to be one. I wanted to, I wanted it to like physically be written in it there, but, but it wasn't allowed, uh, that, to aim for one's particular, you know, particular, but, you know.
No, thank you though. Thank you so much.
But it's, it's, definitely jump on that committee.
Oh, I will. Look at me, look at me and my rant right now.
Okay, um, I think we are at, at six forty-five, we have the joint appointment for the library trustee.
All right.
I can't find that.
I apologize, I.
I guess we're not doing this here.
Well, it seems to not be in my packets. Stefan, if you'd like to.
I can certainly.
Phil, Phil in here.
So we had a trustee needing to resign because she moved from Charlton to the Albany area. And I guess the processes for the Board of Selectmen to join in with the trustees in appointing somebody. We have appointed Cheryl Meskis at our, at our June twenty-fourth meeting to fill KT's, Kathleen Tarian's position until I guess the next election, when Cheryl will have to run for the remainder of Kathleen's position. So we would like you to endorse that appointment.
Yeah, that, that term is for how long though?
Our term is a three-year term. I'm not sure exactly what's left on Kathleen's term.
I apologize, I don't, I don't have the information.
Yeah, I don't have that either.
Stefan, are you looking for us to endorse or do we have to also vote?
I think you actually have to vote to, to agree that.
Second, I'd second.
You're going to have Cheryl Meskis fill that position.
Mary's got her hand up.
For this, it has to be a joint appointment of both boards.
Together, we have to be in the same room.
So you need to have any of the trustees here. You guys can't take a vote until they're here.
That's not when I was under the impression, I was under the impression that we as a group appointed her at our last meeting.
No, you make the recommendation and then it's a joint vote. It's in the memo, how to do it.
What memo?
They have a memo.
There wasn't, a tad.
Sorry.
No one has a memo.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, we've done that that way in the past.
We have.
Yeah, we've done it to planning board. Do we, when is your next meeting?
Um, it is the third, third Thursday of August.
So we still have another meeting before then anyway.
So we'll have another meeting and if you, if, if a majority of your board, a quorum of your board can't show up, maybe we can get three of us to show up to your meeting.
It's a quick two-minute vote.
Yeah, it's like very fast.
How about we do some kind of a Zoom meeting?
When is, when is your next meeting?
Hey, she's, Barbara's, she's got a great point. In order to expedite this, can we just schedule a quick Zoom with us and them and do the remote?
We would need a post.
It's an urgent need.
Mary says no.
It's an urgent need.
It has to be posted to meet. They can't.
But can we, we can post it two days prior, right? Forty-eight hour notice?
Two days prior, I thought you meant it's not yesterday.
No, no, I mean, but we can post forty-eight hours from now for an urgent need to fill, to fill that need and do a Zoom meeting.
So is there, the urgent need is?
There's not an urgent need, need other than the fact that we're going to be working in August and September, looking at applicants for a new library director.
How about we?
When, when is your next meeting?
July?
Second, second Tuesday in August.
August tenth.
So we can, we could possibly just show up to your, we, we could post and show up to your meeting or, or if, if you guys can't show up to our meeting, whatever is the.
If it's August fifth, we can probably get four of us to your meeting.
I'll take back my motion.
I, I think, I think David's motion was a little more reasonable, a little faster, on a faster track. It may be simpler if we just did it via Zoom and announced forty-eight hours.
Then both boards would have to post and, and if they don't, if they don't need an official vote before your next meeting.
Yeah, you'll still have to.
It sounds like they do.
Sounds like they do.
It would be nice to have that all in place because there may be some stuff that we're already going to be doing with any applicants.
So we'll work.
For next week, that we give them several days to get their members to stay and still post also, yes or no? And are we still allowed to do Zoom since we're back from COVID?
Yep, you can still do Zoom, so, um, tentatively we could have, tentatively could have another meeting, not next week, the week after, and then just do it then.
So Patsy, a five-minute Zoom.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine. If you guys are fine with that, we can, we can, as long as enough, if we have quorum for both boards for a quick meeting.
Because it, it does sound urgent because they are, they are going to be contemplating a new director.
Yeah, I think she won't be able to officially vote. She's not a member.
Yeah, next week then.
So the next, the next meeting, we'll have a minute Zoom.
So what do we need to do? A motion to have him post or no, we just?
No, just.
We just have to post the meeting and the, the two boards will get together, together as two boards.
And you guys will work together and kind of figure out the time and date and just let us all know.
I'll post, I mean, I will send an email to folks for dates that are good for them for next week and the week after.
Probably for the week after.
Okay.
But you, she could still attend meetings, it's just.
Oh, she has already attended a meeting.
Your official note, you know, votes.
She just can't vote.
We'll, we'll do everything we can. We appreciate it. Sorry, it's a little bit of a confusing.
Yes, it's very confusing.
It's all these darn laws that we have to follow. We have the poll hearing on Booto Road.
Yeah, we still have five minutes for that.
Employee appreciation.
Uh, the disclosure.
Okay, so we have a new disclosure form for non-elected municipal employees?
Yep. So attaches a disclosure form submitted by Donald Conopacke. Mr. Conopacke is a member of the Charlton Activities Council and Pasture Prime Players, which enters into agreements for the rental of the Charlton Arts and Activities Center. He is a volunteer on the Charlton Activities Council and president of Pasture Players, Inc., a nonprofit performing arts group which uses the facilities. The position is unpaid and voluntary. A use of facilities agreement is a matter in which the Pasture Prime Players would have a financial interest. They pay a quarterly fee to the Charlton Activities Council. As the board is his appointing authority, you would have to approve his disclosure. I would recommend the approval.
And this is just kind of the same thing that lawyers have to sign, right?
It's, uh, yeah, it's just a, a state disclosure form that he has a potential financial interest and something that he could potentially be voting on.
Do we have a motion?
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five more minutes. Um, I think this, the hours will be a longer discussion, so. Right, um, we have a few minutes to talk about, we have Employee Appreciation Day coming up. What is this?
All right, I will actually just turn right over to Basha who can give additional information on this.
Yes, yes, this is excitement. So thank you to a fearless leader, Mr. Charman Borowski, who is not here with us today. We have initiated the annual Town of Charlton Employee Appreciation Day. And I'm looking forward to it, so it's going to be the third Tuesday of every August from now on. Mary's working on a bylaws and everything to go with it. We will try to mix it up every year, but for this year, what we have planned is Italian-style dinner. We're gonna have some pizza, meatballs, some pasta. Unfortunately, we have no wine unless Andrew tells me otherwise.
Oh, you guys have a little licensing authority.
So moved.
Yes, moved for that. So, yeah, no wine, but, um, but we have selectmen Corona's to humbly volunteer to sing the Sinatra. So even, even no wine, we will have a singer. Um, this is just to say thank you.
Can, can we get back to the wine part before I start singing Sinatra?
No, but I, we will have some karaoke singing. We have the Charlton resident Bonnie Wallace, who will be singing and playing the guitar. This is simply just the only way I could come up with to say thank you to the town employees for the hard work and, you know, putting up with us and everything that's going on. So stay tuned, more to come.
Right. Um, we have any good gossip, so to kill three minutes or?
How about we do the ambulance billing policy?
Isn't it seven o'clock now?
Um, I get, we got fifty, depends on which clock.
Two more minutes based on the phone, right, which is.
Six fifty-eight.
All right, so attaches a draft ambulance billing hardship write-off policy from Chief Knopf. It is recommended that the board approve the policy, which will become part of our financial policies. Uh, just as a little bit of a background, this was one of the things that was picked up during our annual audit, those, that our auditor recommended that we have on file. So this is, this is our response.
What have we been doing in the past?
We have been following this policy. Um, we just never had it as an official adopted in the official policies manual. It just, in the, in the records that were being audited by the, by the auditor, this was not present.
That's, um, do we have a motion? And does anybody have any questions?
I have no questions, no.
I'm always happy to get our, our policies in writing, just clarifies things and, and that means it's the same for everybody. Same thing needs to be.
It sounds like we've already been doing it. I'd, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now.
By the time I read it, it'll be. Poll hearing for Booto Road. Attach will find a request from National Grid installing one joint old pole on Booto Road. Also attaches the notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Department and DPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to abutters.
Do you want to? Do we need to?
I can read that.
Great.
All right, public hearing. Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, seven o'clock PM in the selectmen's meeting room, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Zero-one-five-oh-seven, via Zoom webinar, to act on a request from National Grid seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features along and across the following roadway. Booto Road, National Grid to install one joint old pole on Booto Road, beginning at a point approximately a hundred and sixty feet north of the center line of the intersecting Gould Road and continuing approximately fifteen feet to an east, in an east direction, installing one pole on Booto Road to serve a new house. They are also seeking permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above intersection of the public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles in buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing.
Do we have any questions?
Just one comment, Madam Chair. I think this is the real reason Slavomir Borowski's not here, as apparently his presence has a very bad outcome with poll hearings. They get out of hand when he's here. And notice he's not here and how quiet this one is.
Do we have any?
There's no comment, no comment received, nobody on.
All right, so.
I'd make, I'd make a motion that we, we allow, we, we agree with the recommendations.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay. So next up is the town hall office hours?
So Ms. Ridlike had requested discussion around town hall office hours be added to the agenda. Currently, the town hall, town hall is open forty hours per week on the, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from eight-thirty AM to five o'clock PM, Tuesdays eight-thirty AM to seven o'clock PM, and closed on Fridays. Appreciating feedback and discussion on town hall hours that best serve the residents of Charlton, so Patsy.
So, um, there was a day that, there was a Thursday that was off. And I must have, I don't know, six or seven people must have reached out and they were pretty like upset that. And they get that it's a new holiday and they got all that, but this whole discussion comes up, I think, every couple of years. And I thought, and I did reach out to Bill too, um, to, you know, to think, to ask him if he thought it should be on the agenda. So I, I think it's worth a discussion on whether what we have currently is good and we're, and will, you know, kind of go on another year, or is it something that we need to discuss further? Maybe get some input from our employees.
Madam Chair, um, so I, I do think we should have this on another agenda when Ms. Borowski's here, Slavomir Borowski, so that we're all here and Andrew can hopefully provide some data. Because, so to Ms. Ridlike's point, the changing of the town hall hours was never meant to be permanent. It was actually a trial, an extended period trial, during which time your predecessor, your last town administrator, was supposed to compile data on whether or not there isn't actual cost savings to the town by going to the four-day model and whether there was any negative impact to the residents. Not just the, you know, the cost savings, but it has to be a cost savings and not negatively impact the residents. So the idea being, if there was a negative impact, we would revert back to the five days, the original schedule. Or if there was no actual significant cost savings to the town, that we would go back so that the residents would have the normal access again. So it was never meant to be permanent. It was a trial and we never got their, their results or the data back.
Are there, are there certain, well, bringing it to another meeting is probably a good idea when Bill's here. But there are certain things that people are trying to get to that they can't get to, certain departments.
And we need certain, so I think the reason why it's on the agenda now is because we can't. If we, if we have, if we move it to another meeting, we may not have the information we need or think we need. So this is a good discussion point to say, what, what do we, you know, what kind of feedback do we want from the employees? Um, I thought that we definitely, there should be, you know, between now and whatever, the next meeting, there should, we should get. I don't know if there needs to be a survey, but actual input on why each department may or may not need a Friday. Or, so here's an example, planning board, you deal with contractors and homeowners, right? So they need the early morning hours because the contractors want to be out, want seven AM hours. And then when the homeowners come in there and do things, they want some evening hours. So it makes sense for that board to do earlier hours and later hours. Does it make sense for them to have four days or does it make sense to have shorter and longer days throughout the week, including Friday? So I think that, in my opinion, each, each of the departments should come to us with a proposal saying the, because we don't, the, I've watched, I've seen this energy savings and all this, it's never there.
No.
As much as I, I've, company after company, I'm an auditor and I see it all the time, there's not really very much savings on the, the money part. But what we, it's customer service. So it's what are our boards doing for our, our residents? And what hours do those particular residents need? Because you're, there's different residents who need different things. So if they can come to us with a short, we're not asking for like, like a world-class research on these are the hours we need because of this. We're asking for basic, um, these hours are best for our department because these are the people we serve and this is when they come in.
So if I may, just in, to Ms. Ridlike's point, I will stress again, the change to four days was never intended to be a permanent change. It was, to your point, can the town see significant cost savings without having a negative impact on the residents? Two different issues. If we haven't seen a significant cost savings, that alone is, is cause to go back to what we were before because this is only a trial. It wasn't ever intended to be a permanent change. As far as residents' access and ability to get what they need from the town, I, I, we want happy employees, but to your point, it's customer service for the residents. So if they can't get in when they need to get in to pull a permit or to get a license or other need because we're not open, that's, that's a major concern.
So I, I know one of the, specifically, you know, it's what Patsy had mentioned before, when, when a, a holiday occurs on a, on a Saturday and town halls then close on a Thursday, that's, that's typically when we, we get the most pushback of, you know, why is town hall closed? So, um, you know, that's, those are comments that I hear too and, and, you know, I think is something that we can better address. So I think one, one policy that we were already looking at moving forward was that, you know, with, with support of the board, was that when a holiday does fall on a Saturday, that that's no longer a Thursday closing, but that's offered as, as a flexible holiday at that point. So that way, the town hall remains open on Thursday and we don't have that negative impact. And the, I think, the more, the time that we see people want to be here on a Friday or residents utilize the service on a Friday is when tax bills are due on Friday. So if that's only one or two times a year at the most, we can work to have town hall open on a Friday to accommodate that or anything, or anything else. You know, ju, I think it's just a matter, we have to be a little bit more flexible with, with some of that stuff. I can invite, you know, definitely get some additional feedback from the employees. But, you know, in, you know, at least conversations that I've heard that, you know, the concern is that when the, it might have been a trial a couple of years ago when it came, you know, when it was rolled out. But, you know, you've kind of seen a, a turnover of a lot of employees in that time who may have taken the position under the auspice that it's a four-day work week. So now have adjusted their own schedules and their own lives to having, to, to what their current work schedules are. So reverting back to that time may, may disrupt some of that.
If I may, um, I'll go back to what I said. Well, we certainly want happy employees. But our primary responsibilities to the residents. And I know I've had a lot of complaints over the years because it's not just about taxes. It's about access to other offices when someone may just have that particular day off and they need a permit or license, but we're closed and that was their day off. So the primary concern to me is the residents' access and I, I would like to hear from the residents. As far as changes, you know, we, we take jobs because we want to establish ourselves somewhere, build a career. And I'll give you a perfect example. The company I work for now, uh, over the pandemic, they went fully remote. And everyone got very comfortable working remotely. And they made hires and brought people in who never spent a day in the office. But all of a sudden, things changed and because things changed, decisions were made, everyone's going back to the office. Those employees who did not want to go back to the office were basically told, this is the job. You don't want to lose people, but the reality is, we serve people at my company. And if they're best served by people going back to the office, people who don't want to go back didn't have to stay. We want our employees to stay. But the fact is, our priority and theirs is to serve the residents. If they choose to not stay because the board determines the best course of action to serve the residents is to open on Fridays again, it's unfortunate, but our primary focus is to make sure our residents are cared for.
I, customer service is the, is the.
Is the key. No, and to, to what we're guys saying, just for me, completely on the side. So when you are producing all of that data, can you also include all the services that are actually not viable or accessible to the people from outside through the, through the, any type of the emails or the website or, you know, like a permitting or, um, paying taxes? Do we have something on the website that they can make those payments? I just, I just need to understand, like, what is exactly that cannot be provided otherwise, that must be provided in person? And, um, with what David was saying, and I agree with everything, um, but now with, with this whole world coming out of the COVID and everything that is happening right now with unemployment and the, you know, people willing or not willing to work and, like you said, I like your point, when everybody changes or, you know, um, their lives accordingly to how they work. I think that before we would go and drastically change the days that they have to work, maybe like you said, we can come up with some ideas of, okay, maybe the Thursdays before holidays, that could be the day that, you know, guys work, something like that, not the other way. And I, I agree absolutely. We're all here for the people, for the residents and, and by all means, but maybe, just maybe, there are other ways that everybody can get happy.
And that's why the, I, I, I think the proposals are a good thing. Let them come to us and they know their people. Let them come to us with proposals. If they think that they can provide and then we have a public hearing and everybody can, you know, residents can chime in.
Madam Chair, there may be other solutions as well, that the town can still be open on Fridays, yet the employees who are doing four days still are.
Maybe one person, they can switch.
Exactly. So maybe it's a flex scheduling where that person is still Monday through Thursday, that one's Tuesday through Friday. So, in other words, I think there are creative ways to potentially have town hall open. So in other words, I think there are creative ways to potentially have town hall open on a Friday to our residents, yet still work with the employees.
It's a great point. Flexibility is the name of the game. So maybe the, maybe the departments choose, choose two Fridays a month to be open. But as I said, those proposals to us saying, this is what we, maybe we need to put some guidance, some basic guidelines in those proposals to say, but again, you can't, you, coming in say nine to five or something for these, or eight to four is not fair because people come in after work for certain offices and again, they know, you know, the, the, all of our department heads, they know their jobs very well and they know when they get their biggest customer load. They know when, when they need to be here. Like for example, HR, um, they need to be here when the people, when the, when the employees are here. So when are most of the employ- you don't have, like, so that kind of stuff, it's, it's.
Yeah, I think most of our department heads already work more than forty hours anyway. For the most part consider themselves three sixty-five on call, you know, they run the department, police chief, fire chief, Andrew, bother him all the time. So, you know.
But Andrew, if there's, if there's any service that can be done, uh, through online or through that town website and it's not being done that way, or it's, you know, the people are prohibited from doing that that way, then that's probably something you have to look into too.
Do you want to have, so Andrew does a lot? Do we want to have the department heads do that? Like we should, let the, let the, let the department heads come to us and say, this is what we offer online, this, this is our proposal, this is what we want? And then we'll review, we'll look at those and kind of.
I, I think I would ask, I'm not opposed, I think it's fine, but I think we should be clear that while we're asking for feedback, it's not an automatic that this board is just going to go with whatever. Right, the board will make a decision, but we, we would like to hear from them and I would like to hear from residents.
Yeah, we're going to make an educated choice.
I, I think rather than two Fridays a month opened, I, I would, I think it'd be, that'd be too confusing for people to remember. I think it'd be better to have every Friday till noon, half day.
Let them come up.
Rather than every, because no one would ever remember what Friday.
I'm just saying, they know their departments, they know their people, they know their, they know the available.
No, let's listen to them.
And then if, and then if we sit here and we say, everybody's working from eight to four and that's it, and that's kind of, you know, like, it's, I'm being sarcastic, but you know.
That's it, Patsy, put her fist down. We're done.
Coming every day. Um, when I work, you work, no. Um, so yeah, I just wanted, so I, 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 I want the employees to be happy and I want the residents to be happy and I think that there's, there's clearly the, we have clearly the ability to make everybody, everybody might need to compromise a little bit, but I think that this is, um, a discussion worth having. I think last year or the year before, we had this discussion last year and it kind of, we kind of just held off on it because there was so many other things going on, but it's worth to kind of sit down and make a decision. Um, so, um.
No, this is great. And I think that will let us to revisit, you know, all those services, like I said, that should be a, maybe are not available to different.
So through Patsy, Andrew, could you not only put out to the employees, but make sure we get some mechanism in place for feedback from residents?
Yep.
We'll post it on our, our social media pages and.
Everyone email Andrew and Patsy.
And Bill.
Yeah, Bill, no, Bill.
Just email Bill.
We're nominated, Bill's the point of contact.
So we go down to old business, did I miss anything?
Nope.
So will the union contract see?
Because I actually want to hold that one after, um, exactly.
Okay. Um, the Amazon, uh, tax discussion, I know that I was supposed to be part of that.
All right. Um, so the town of Charlton's been approached by Amazon regarding the entering of a TIF or development agreement or tax increment financing agreement relative to their proposed facility at fifty-three Sturbridge Road. Uh, the parties involved are looking to begin discussions, uh, with the goal of presenting agreements for that required town meeting, uh, approval to the fall special town meeting at the end of October. I'm requesting that members of the board be appointed to participate in the discussions with Amazon. And just as a, as a premiere to that, um, we do have a tentative date of this Thursday to be able to start meetings, so.
This, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Yeah, so.
So if anybody's available or.
So through the, through the chair, Andrew, I'm working Thursday night, so I can't. I have a seminar from six to eight. I would like to make a suggestion, however, since the, the, the TIF realistically is meaningless at this point because it's in the hands of the planning board. I have no problem with starting discussions, so we have a little head start, but this is fully in the planning board's hands. With that in mind, before we appointed people, would it be a good idea to, when Philip Borowski gets back, have us come together as a board on an off night for a workshop to kind of maybe set some, not only do the appointment of our members to that committee, but maybe set some guidelines we'd like that, that those appointed to follow.
So the, the TIF is actually under the, um, direction of the assessors because they, they actually do the, um, that assess, or they, they kind of, I'd say, based off the valuation and then bring it to the board of selectmen for, for recommendation.
Don't we really just eye candy while we sit there?
No, we actually can negotiate the TIF.
So, um, I'm just wondering as far as a, as far as a preliminary introductory meeting, do you want anybody from the, from just the board of selectmen to be meeting with them? Maybe not discussing the TIF, but at least some sort of.
Some, some high level.
Some high level discussion.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that's a good idea. Well, they're, they're also, they're looking to, although it's still in the planning board, they're also looking to kind of fast track this a little bit, so I kind of don't want to delay that, but. So you were, you were talking Thursday evening or Thursday?
Thursday morning, probably around ten or eleven o'clock.
That's the Zoom one? Is it Zoom or such in person?
Who's going to be there? Will there be, um, we'll have, we'll have the assessor? We'll have an attorney?
Yes. He reached, um, Miracle Cotton.
What time?
Uh, ten, either ten o'clock or eleven o'clock.
My personal opinion, this is my personal opinion, I think that we should be very involved in all of this, from the beginning to the end. And not one, but at least two people. That's what I think. This is going to be a big project and this is going to be a lot of things happening and now, I think this is hugely important.
I, 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 I can be there, but, but if, but I agree, if we need two people, if we have someone else that can be there as well.
At least the two, two, two appointed, but at least, so, so at least one is at given meeting at every given time.
Sorry. Uh, I mean, even then, we can, we can bring in different members of the board at different times depending on, and, you know, even posted as, as regular meetings, you know, I just want to make sure that any meetings that we have with them actually have a member of the board present to be able to relay anything.
So you'll do this Thursday?
Yes, I can.
So well, at least, and if, if you're, I, I'm, 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 I have.
I'm working, so if Steve can do it this Thursday, I mean, I can always be everywhere, but.
Just so that we have a presence, but I mean, we rely heavily on the assessor and attorneys to make sure that, that it's legit. Remember, we, I mean, we can have our, we'll, we'll have our opinions and I guess whatever our backgrounds kind of to help, but it's really the advice, I mean, it's the data that's provided and the experience. Um, I'm sure there's also a consultant that's part of this that really knows how to value this stuff. Um, so again, we're just there to kind of be ears for the board, it's.
So they'll make recommendations, but it's our authority.
Right, at the end of the day, we would have, we have to vote to present it to town. Well, it's not, it's the resident's authority, they have to approve it at town meeting, right?
But you.
The authority for the negotiating of the TIF is this board's. We take recommendations from the people Andrew mentioned, but the actual negotiating and the authority to do that is this board.
Oh, yeah.
Town meeting has to vote for it to approve it, but this board has the final say in negotiations.
I think it's, it's hugely important.
But with, but with the timeframe, I, I, I don't want to postpone it because with the timeframe in order to get it.
We're not, you're going Thursday.
Yeah, no one's postponing anything.
I thought, I thought you were back.
No, no, no.
No, you just want to get this on the table and try to establish.
I go with you. I come, I'll come.
Here we go.
All right, perfect.
Bring bagels.
All you need is some Sinatra.
Why me to the moon?
And you'll just keep us updated and. Do we, uh, so we go through.
So you didn't have to vote on that or anything, that was just.
No, just, as long as you know to be there.
Yep. Thursday, kind of.
We have committee reports. I think I'm blind, I needed a new pair of glasses. Um, our regional dispatch feasibility.
Yeah, so recently the town of Webster had approached both the town of Sturbridge and myself to gauge interest in exploring expansion of their current regional dispatch center. Uh, currently the town of Webster and Dudley are in a regional dispatch partnership which is located in Webster. State nine one one has offered to fund a feasibility study to review the potential of this, uh, of this partnership and what would be required to meet the needs of each town. Speaking with Chief Dowd, he's noted that he's at least, um, interested in supporting the conducting of the study on the matter to see if it is feasible. In order to move forward with any feasibility study, though, a, a support is needed from the board of selectmen from each town to pursue the matter. So I wanted to gauge through wishes of the board on this.
Does it cost us any money?
No, it is fully funded through state nine one.
Yeah, it's fully funded through the state.
Right.
The feasibility study, but.
The feasibility study.
But then the cost, the cost of the, we'd have to weigh the cost between having our own people do it and.
Right.
And that's hopefully the study will bring back that data. Um, any questions or comments or?
Madam Chair, just as I had mentioned to Andrew, for everyone watching, so I support, it's a free study, look into it, right? Shame on us if we don't explore options, but just my, my comment is to, you know, move with caution because we actually have been down this road repeatedly and every time we pursue this, it, it becomes a mess and it never happens because towns can never agree. So it's certainly worth pursuing to see where we are today, but just move forward slowly and understand that it may or may not go somewhere.
Things are hap- are well in this town. I think, I think they do a great job, but if we can get a, you know, a free, you know, a grant to do a free study, then let's do it and get the data. It can never hurt to get the information.
It's a non-binding study. I, I'm, I'd be willing to look at it.
Can we make sure the study shows not only the positive impacts, but the negatives, such as having a dark police station at night in the towns that don't host the, uh, regional dispatch?
Of course.
Who, who's doing the study? Is it?
Um, it is the Cullen Center, UMass.
So just so people are aware, if, if you have a regional dispatch.
I, I can remember a few weeks ago reading in, when, when that car drove through the, the police station in Leicester.
Yeah.
They found out about that from watching a camera.
Yep.
Because the police station was empty.
Yeah.
And it was six o'clock on a Sunday morning and it was, it was the Worcester dispatch, I believe, or state police dispatch that caught on to that and said, hey, someone just drove through your front door.
Yeah, so the negative.
That's, uh, yeah, that's one of the, that's concerning.
Yeah, well, some of the other negatives are, as I, we were talking about earlier. And just hopefully this will all be included in the study as well. If you have an unmanned police station at night and someone needs to pull over the road for whatever reason, safety issue, being followed, and they normally would go to a police station because it is manned, even by dispatch. For those towns in a regional dispatch who are now unmanned, that station is effectively dark, so residents can no longer, in an emergency, pull into that parking lot. It's just like, I want to hear that part of the picture as well.
Right.
I agree, with the caution.
So do we need a vote to, to, to be part of the study?
It, we, it would require a vote to at least proceed with the, with the, with the support of the study.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry, sorry. I jumped the gun.
This one's going to be babysat, um, as the chair, so, um, we're on to committee reports now?
Yes, we can. Actually, before we do committee reports, I just wanted to take care of that, the, um, other business, the, for the, for the legal account, so.
Okay.
Um, that's just as we're closing out, um, the end of the year, we had a number of, um, bills that were related to items that we had a town article, um, fund for. Um, and we had been going through the year of charging the account, but it turns out we actually need to, um, appropriate the funds over into special counsel from the article in order to ex, in order to extend. So, um, the total, um, expenditure from the, uh, accounts in there is a hundred and twelve, five thirty-nine, thirty-six that would need to be, um, transferred from legal consulting services article to special counsel.
So we're just moving our money, so where we, where do we, based on our budget, to where we can spend it, that's all.
The art, the article, the article appropriated for legal counsel to special counsel.
Do we have a motion to?
So move.
Was there a specific need or just general?
It was generally, it was the special accounts for, um, LNG and VGG.
So can I vote on this if it's related to VGG?
Me, whenever it stays.
I will abstain.
Do we have a second?
Any second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I stand.
You guys remind me of that.
So now, now we are on to our committee reports. I will, I have, I have nothing to update on CMR, um, PC. Um, Steve, you want to update us on any EDC stuff that we should?
We had a, we had a EDC meeting tonight at five PM. It's, it's pretty energized. It's a good, it's a good working group. They're working on marketing issues and, and getting things together and Andrew was also on the, that was a Zoom meeting. Yeah, they're, I think they're, they're pretty fired up. They're kind of, they're looking at, um, Bill Fontaine is, is back and heavily involved. They're looking at, at, um, some of the zoning changes going on, some other things and.
So you guys are working with the planning board on the zoning?
Yeah, 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 they're, yeah, they're, they're, um, this whole, this whole Am- Amazon project, if it were to go through, could be pretty expansive for, for the twenty quarter.
Both of those distribution centers.
What's that?
Both, both of the distribution centers, right?
Both, yeah, both, both. And, and if, you know, if, if one has a thousand employees, that's, I don't think the, um, the Yankee diner is going to be able to handle that. They'd love it, but it'd be a line. And we did, we also discussed, Peter Bory is on that as well, and, and we discussed the capacities for water and sewer. And we're pretty, we're pretty good. He gave us the numbers. Um, we're pretty good for the time being for, for those type of businesses and restaurants. And we go along there.
And Steve, just, uh, keep my, oh, I don't know if you want to mention something about the survey that we were talking about, meeting as well. Uh, just basically that we're, um, the EDC is working to develop a survey of both businesses and residents of, um, you know, sh- things that help business, things that are, that could be better in Charlton and they, basically ways to try to help and improve businesses, but then from a, a resident's survey perspective, doing it concurrently, looking to see what residents want to do, I'd say, goes along with the master planning stuff and it's kind of preliminary stages, but, um, could be some early data to help drive some of that.
And how's that survey being done? Where's that?
Uh, we're still, they're still working on developing it, but they're going to be doing, doing it as a Google form and then trying to s- say, spec- specifically the business ones, sending that through the cha- through the local chamber and then, and then out through social media.
And social media, town hall and all that. Is this, do we, is the EDC doing anything, um, to aggressively attract any businesses? Wha- what exactly are they doing? Are they doing out there?
I mean, we, we, excuse me, we just started a meeting in January, so we probably had four or five meetings. And we, I think our, there's a lot of really bright people in that group. It's, it's, they're, they're fun meetings. Not saying there's not bright people in this group, but, but.
I think the, the main, you know, what, what they're doing at this point is kind of generating some legwork to get some of the advertisements together. Um, a lot of the former EDC had focused a lot on advertising properties that were vacant and potentially for that. So I think as the, as the EDC's kind of kicked off, they're kind of doing some of that legwork to figure out how to take some of the pamphlets and stuff that had been done back, you know, five, ten years ago and translate that into online marketing.
Super.
Still, still working forward, but haven't officially kind of gone full throttle.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, uh, do we do have some kind of a, a brochure, right? A town brochure? Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, uh, we do have some kind of a, a brochure, right, a town brochure?
It was something that we were looking for, right?
There used to be one.
Well, yeah, that's, actually, that's kind of, I was talking to the Blue Water Group and they mentioned, that's how they found us. They found, they found a pamphlet that was eighteen, twenty years old that the EDC did and throw them back down.
But do we have a current one or no?
We don't, and that's something that's on the list.
So that's something important. I was just thinking, uh, we've done something like this in, in Dadi and what they, what they have done was to create pamphlets and as simple as it might sound, they left it with the Nichols College for the seniors, you know, uh, especially the business majors.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that, so they were handy and they take it.
Have a competition and have like, you know, um.
Well, we did, and one, we have reached out to, um, there are some students that are interested in doing some, some aerial photography and things like that and to put a video together and, you know, we're talking with Bay Path, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, yeah.
But that brochure, especially in a format that can be shared on a social media and all, that's, that's huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
And we, yeah, and it'll be narrated by Andrew Golis.
Yeah, nobody wants.
Are we getting any sponsorships for that or who is financing this?
That's ki- that's kind of where some of the beginning, you know, where, where the, the survey's gonna come in from is making some of those initial contacts with businesses that would be interested in partnering for the advertisement.
Mm-hmm, oh, super.
Yeah.
That's great.
Um, LNG committee is really, we're really just waiting for a decision to be made at this point, um.
So is some interest, I, I, um, haven't had a chance to update the board on, on this, but I did have an interesting update was that the presiding officer from the EFSP had actually passed away on fourth of July. So the, um, you know, the EFSP is gonna have to find a new presiding officer in order to ta- to take on the, uh, the, the hearing. And so that might bring a little bit more of a delay in it, but we'll, we'll see how that goes, so.
Marijuana advisory, um, I don't think there's been a meeting since last time we updated.
I, 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 no, I don't believe so.
I believe that they were looking at, um, two weeks from today to have another meeting.
David, the Sex Fund of Law Committee, any new updates, anything?
Nothing nee- there's nothing actually needed other than having a placeholder for the fall time meeting.
Perfect.
And we'll have that ready to be put on the, uh, the warrant.
And I have an attended municipal building ad hoc committee, I think that if someone else.
So we had taken the board, we had.
Taking a piece off, that's right. Okay, that's good.
Copy and paste.
Alright. We already did the ambulance write-off policy. Um, we don't have anything on our goals and objectives, do we?
No, I think we just, uh, probably next month refresh, you know, probably take our goals and objectives list and try to make. And we were talking about maybe town administrator, um, goals and objectives and then Board of Selectmen goals and objectives. So we just kinda held it off for, for this month until the new board can establish their own new goals.
So Madam Chair, we're not dealing with U-PAC, that's just an executive session item?
Yep, that's.
It will be, it will, it'll potentially be an open session item after executive session discussion, so.
Um, TA report?
Alright, I'll just make it, try to skim through here. So first, I just want to officially announce the appointment of Treasurer Collector Virginia Porter. This Porter served as Assistant Collector for the town of Charlton for the last sixteen years. And her position is officially effective July first. Uh, right now, we're soliciting applications for, for the backfill of, of that position, so we'll be looking for some action from the board coming up. But congratulations to Virginia, I think she's gonna be great for that office, so. Um, we do have the assessment center scheduled for the vacant police lieutenant's position, that's been scheduled for September tenth. Uh, the department's working with Public Safety Consultants, who was the prior consultant, um, to fill the chief's role last, uh, the last time it was open. So we're, we're familiar with them and, um, so we have, uh, the officer, the officers that are qualified to take the assessment have been notified of the assessment date.
How many is that?
Four.
So what were the requirements for an officer to be qualified? Was it, was there, was there a number of, only so many could apply, was there a requirement?
It's a, it's a minimum of four. Um, and I believe that our requirement was that it had to be at least sar- sergeant level or above. But if it, the sergeant had not, um, if the, uh, not enough sergeants were interested in taking the test, then we'd have to open it up to the full patrolman pool.
Okay, so command staff first?
Yes.
And then if not enough, but it's all internal?
Yep.
And then obviously the step after that will be, would be filling a sergeant's position at some point.
Yes.
Through an assessment as well.
Yes.
And then a patrolman.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Uh, so, uh, on the LNG thing, so Mass D P has scheduled a public hearing on the draft air permit for the, uh, for the NEC project. That's been scheduled for July twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM, and that public hearing is being held via Zoom. Uh, we do have the information for that on the town's website. Congratulations to Patrolman Gaylord and K-9 Dozer, they've com- they've officially completed their, uh, handling course of the Boston Police Department and now are on patrol and, uh, continuing their training. So, um, unfortunately Snoop flunked out, but he has found a new home, so he's doing quite well. But, uh, Dozer and Officer Gaylord are looking forward to getting on the road and just wanna thank everybody who has contributed, uh, to the grant, uh, you know, to, uh, to the program through donations. Uh, so far, it hasn't cost the town anything, it's been a hundred percent funded through both grants and donations. And I know that now they're looking toward, um, getting Dozer a vest, so. That hopefully also will be covered through the, through the program.
So, uh, is Officer Gaylord going to listen to Dozer or not?
I don't know, I don't know. We'll have to bring him in and.
So how does, I'd love to meet him, yeah, maybe at a, at a next meeting, we, we bring him, we could.
Sounds good.
Hide some Confor Band and do it.
Fair question.
We'll test Dozer out.
If Dozer's been through five hundred and sixty hours of training.
Better find something.
You better, yeah, you better, yeah. But, so that, I think it's a great, I, it's a, it's a great addition to the town, I'm happy to see it. So, so the dog goes, lives with Officer Gaylord?
Yes, yeah, so he is, you know, the one handler, he has him all the time. So there are, you know, provisions within the union agreement to allow for an officer to flex their time for use of the dog, so.
And, and for food and upkeep and rent bills, that's covered by the grant, it's, it's still on the grant at this time.
Yep, yep.
Maybe something to, we will have, we'd have to visit in the future maybe or something.
Well, hopefully it remains donation fed and grant funded, but, you know, we'll, we'll keep on top of that and let you guys know if there are any, you know, budgetary needs for, to keep the program going. Um, I have been working with, uh, student, or former student select person Henry Wyland, um, on new initiatives to help improve, uh, involvement with local government, you know, specifically off the heels of our town meeting or the town meeting where we're looking to for additional e- engagement of citizens. So we've been bouncing some, some stuff back and forth, we'll be working on some, launching some new initiatives and hoping drive additional, uh, participation for local elections and, in town meetings. Um, one of his ideas was related to the, uh, recent, uh, video that I put out with the, um, town administrators report. So I'm gonna be trying to do that every three weeks. Uh, so thanks to Henry for the, um, for the recommendation on that, looking to improve that. So if you guys have any recommendations how to make that better, let me know.
And the, just to add to, to just part of that discussion, um, I know, just because we're on the old, you know, and attend the Old Home Day meetings, they're talking about the, possibly the town having a booth too, so we can kinda, and maybe people can just volunteer to man it and actually talk to the citizens about, you know, promote, recruit.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
When we get further on, we'll have more details, but.
You're going back to your Spark project thing? So that thing that you did for the, the local radio station and the TV station, that series for the, for the kids at school?
Yep.
It, that, I thought that was a great idea. I think you should continue on doing this.
Yeah, a- any opportunities like that I'm willing to take on and, you know, say, try, trying to kind of build off of, off of that with, um, you know, kind of a we- a, a video every three weeks to.
You can make that, you can make that, um, right in schedule.
Mm-hmm.
You can, you know, talk to Nina about it and she will, that would be, that would be great. I thought that was wonderful.
That was the beginning of the, when the, when the schools had asked you to kind of do that, they appreciated that immensely, so that, that's great.
Glad it was, glad it was well received, so. Um, we have reached out to Bay Path to gauge their interest on the implementation of the student select person. There's initial interest in probably just pu- doing it as an additional student versus, you know, competing against the deadly Charlton. But there, he, it's gonna be passed down to the principal and see if there is gonna be, you know, student body interest going into the year, so. Let you know how that proceeds. Chairman Borowski and I had met with the Sustainability Committee last week, um, who had expressed some interest in per- pursuing a municipally sponsored residential trash collection program. Um, the, the members specifically noted the impending end of the Casella Agreement in two thousand and twenty-three and how this might provide an opportunity for the, for the municipal solution to be utilized. Um, you know, obviously very early on to dis- to describe that, but we're gonna try to gather some information, um, way, you know, way to the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen to see if there is any real interest and if that's something that we pursue at the end of the Casella contract, along with, um, procuring the, um, you know, the actual town's trash collection, which will be a new budgetary line item, so.
But that's separate from that, uh, recycle vase that we had? Was it a recycle? Um, the people were bringing the leaves and, uh, yards, because that's what I was working and there was a lot of people coming there.
So what they were looking at doing is that now that they've established the, the leaf dump, you know, over at DPW, which is, which was, you know, pretty well, um, utilized for, for year one, is that if, if this is a direction that the town, that, you know, the town thinks is worth pursuing, that that service be rolled into a municipal contract that, you know, if you're going to utilize the town system, then you als- then you also get access to, um, curb, you know, potentially curbside collection. Or if it was a transfers, if a transfer station makes sense for the town or a joint transfer station, that, that also include, um, you know, um, seasonal leaf dumping. So again, just to kind of throw it on the, on the board's radar, it's a lot more, you know, a lot more, um, data that has to be mined and brought forward on this, but, um, just so that way it doesn't fall off.
Seems like a very huge thing for the town to take on.
Yeah. Well, there we go.
You break it, you abide.
So I, I did, I have done some very quick back of, the back of the napkin calculations. Um, just based off of current utilization of, of curbside collection versus people who might use the O- who may use the Oxford Transfer Station or other, um.
On fifty-six?
Yes, um, or, or other means, so, you know, they might have a dumpster or something along those lines. Um, using just the number of residents under three family homes, it's an almo- it's almost five thousand homes in Charlton. Of that four thousand, almost four thousand have contracted trash collection. So right now, you only have about a thousand that don't utilize something. So I think it's really, you know, maybe more discussions with the Sustainability Committee now knowing that and, you know, just the business metrics and who could potentially bid on a contract if that's even a viable option, so.
Yeah, also, you know, part of that thought process has to be whether or not we should also be looking into renegotiating a new contract with Casella or another hauler.
Right.
And if they, if they don't, from, at least from the town's perspect- perspective, at least for the municipal pickup, then the door's open to anyone, Waste Management, Allied, Republic, you know, if there's a new local hauler in town, anyone can bid on it then.
Exactly, so. So more to come on that.
Yeah, be interested to see how that pans out.
And then, uh, just wanna recognize the emergency management staff and the cert team for their work in watching the cooling center on the, and I'm sure everybody forgets when the sun was out, but it was actually a hundred degrees for a couple of days in a row, a couple of weeks ago. But, uh, just wanted to recognize their efforts and thank, thank them for their time and putting it together.
That was wonderful, surprising to see, I was, I was impressed when I.
Yeah, I think it's something that we should automatically put on, uh, well, notify Charlton Hapings, Charlton Master Reform and all the, the social media presence, because we do this anytime there is that type of condition. And people don't know about it unless we promote it on Facebook or social media, so I think it should be an, an automatic that we do that.
Probably a good idea to announce it at the town meetings and, and in our, you know, just so the residents who show up, you know. I didn't know, I was surprised to see it on social media, because, I mean, and I've been, since I was a little baby, I was like in this town hall, so I was surprised to. Impressed, but surprised. Okay, um, that's it.
Executive.
So, we. We need to adjourn, but to go into e- executive, right?
Right, enter into executive session, um, you may have to come out at the end just to take action on old business item number two.
So we go into executive session and then we will come out of executive session to take care of any vote or public business that needs to be taken care of and then we will adjourn.
Do I have, do you have the complete wording? I don't, I just cut off here.
I'm ready to go.
Alright, let you do it.
I'm ready to do the Bill Borowski speed reading.
No, nice and slow.
Motion to enter executive session under MGL C thirty A, section twenty-one A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, police union, U-PAC union and VGG. If a meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining a litigating, litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
So now, we need a, a vote to go into executive and when we come out of executive, we'll only, we'll go back into open session just to vote if, if necessary.
Yep.
So, the chair does declare?
The chair so does declare, um, we'll call vote.
Aye.
Do you?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
We are now in executive session.